Regular meeting of the Windsor Heights City Council come to order. Roll call.
Okay, Skiris?
Here.
Joseph Jones?
Here.
Lefredo? Mike Jones?
Here.
Harms?
Here.
So I don't see that Mr. Lefredo's on. Hey Sue.
Hi.
Well, I haven't heard that he wasn't going to be here, so. Try.
He called and asked for the connection information earlier today.
Did he?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's good.
He didn't have to put in a password last time. I wonder if that's causing him a headache this time.
If he clicks on the link, it should just automatically have that password in it.
We'll see in a minute. No, I got no response. Let's assume he'll join us here in just a short period of time. Move to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Back in.
Roll call.
Skiris?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms?
Yes.
The first item on the agenda is opening a, the public hearing for designation of the expanded Windsor Heights Consolidated Urban Renewal Area and the Urban Renewal Plan Amendment. Motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Skiris?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Harms?
Yes.
Mark, you want to say a couple of things about this?
Uh, yes. If council members would go to pages 21 and 22 of this, we're getting a little bit ahead here. We're going to have another Urban Renewal Plan Amendment, I believe, because it, I realized after we were partway into this process that the two of the parcels owned by Windsor Presbyterian Church are not in the urban renewal area. And that was because the map I was using was old and discolored and the label covered up the two parcels that I realized later were not in the urban renewal area. So I think we want those added. The church is continuing to have conversations with people about the property. So as soon as we finish with this, we'll start this process again at those two parcels. So those are shown, if you go to page 22. There's a area detail insert with just a very small one and then another larger one just to the northwest of that. So I'm just making you aware that that's in the works. We could have started this sooner, but it would have gotten complicated by having two different projects at two different stages of adoption. So I decided we'd just wait, finish this one that we're doing now, then we'll start this next one. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment on this? I know we have no written comment at this point in time. Move to close the public hearing.
Moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Skiris?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms?
Yes.
Next item is consideration of the Resolution 202047 to declare necessity and establish the urban renewal area pursuant to Section 403.4 of the Code of Iowa and approve the renewal plan amendment for Windsor Heights Consolidated Urban Renewal Area. Motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Can we have a discussion?
Skiris?
Yes, you may have discussion, comments.
Okay, so when this was originally discussed, that being the bike hub, it was July and it was 2019. And I know because I went back and listened to the audio recording of the meeting. And the discussion back then was that there may be an ask from the city to pay $150,000 for a feasibility study. I see that in this, it's now we're talking about spending $275,000. And my understanding, unless something has changed, is that this is a private project. So is my, is this, is this to me that we're talking about allocating $275,000 for a private project?
It authorizes spending up to that amount, but it would take separate action by the city council to make that happen. This is just putting the blocks in place to allow that to happen if that should, the council should later on decide they want to do that.
Is that a yes then?
Uh, yes, it could happen.
Okay. And so my question is what, what happened from 150 to 275? And what is the justification to expend public funds in that amount for this project? What is the need?
Well, there's the bridge study that's underway right now. That's the only thing I'm aware of that's occurring today related to this project.
Well, but that, that's different though. I mean, if, if we're talking about a bridge, that's a public, you know, a bridge is public, that's fine. But, I mean, we're talking about the, the funds specifically mentioned, you know, are it is anticipated that the city's use of incremental property tax revenues for the bike hub planning phase project will not exceed $275,000. That says bike hub. That doesn't say anything about a bridge.
Well, that's true. It's, the bike hub project incorporates a number of things, including the bridge. There's a developer who expressed interest in building something possibly in combination with the city. So those are the only things I'm aware of that would potentially happen with this. I don't know if I'm answering your question. I'm trying to do the best I can.
Well, no, I, I think you're answering it. I think you're saying, you're, you're answering the, the question that I'm asking, the answer is yes, is that these funds are anticipated to be made available for a private project. That's, I think that's the answer you're giving.
Well, I put in the context of could be made available. I, the developer hasn't given us any proposal yet that says I want to do X. He's generally, he's talked generally about building a building that would, as the way I recall it, be a joint city private project. But there's no written proposal. This is just a verbal indication of interest, I guess, the way I put it.
So Mark, where did the number come from?
I'm trying to remember.
That was, would have been my next question. And if there's been nothing said, then how do we, how did we get to $275,000?
I don't have a good answer to that question off the top of my head. When these types of resolutions are adopted, it's typically you pick a number that you think is the most you're ever going to do so that you don't have to come back later and do it again because something came up that wasn't foreseen. And now there's a the project grew to something more than that. So if the council wants to amend it to some different number, I think you can do that.
Dave, Mike called me as I was just talking. Did he? Did he reach out to you?
I haven't seen anything. What'd you say?
Well, he, he called me and he, I didn't answer, obviously. But I, I'd assume maybe he's having some trouble getting into the Zoom.
I'll touch base back with him.
Okay. Well, I, I think you've answered my questions as best you can. You know, the, the issue that I take is it's sort of like, you know, university is like, well, this will have to be, this can be, you know, approved or denied on a later basis, you know, but the plan sort of that sets into motion a it, it's difficult to reverse course when you, when you talk about things like this. So I haven't been really given a great deal of information on this project since July. In fact, I've been given no information on this project since July. So I, I'm not sure what the ask for is for this dollar amount. I don't think we should support that dollar amount because there's no clear reason as to why we should. I have no problem with, you know, this being in with, you know, changing the urban renewal, but that's, that's just my opinion.
Mike, I appreciate your comments because I kind of am in the same space of, it would have been helpful to have an update and this is a project that I've been very supportive of and tried to be. Although I wasn't necessarily supportive of the bridge piece, but conceptually, I think this is needed, but I'm struggling with this allocation or request for dollars without any sort of an update based on the timing and no conceptual idea of where the project is or where it's going.
I think part of the dilemma here is trying to determine where's the bridge going to go because that's going to be the driver of what else comes along with this project. And I appreciate your comments about making it look like the city's authorizing spending without knowing what it's spending the money on. And I, I get that part of it. If you want to table this, you could do that. We might have to go back and restart the process once we know more about the bridge location, but that's your call certainly.
Well, I don't know what need we have at this juncture. I mean, could we, can we just move this forward without the dollar allocation or strike that section or?
Because the, the ask is for the identification of the projects as far A, the 73rd Street Reconstruction Project, which from my perspective, I have no issue with that. And then B, the Center Street Bike Hub Development Project Design Phase. That is what I take issue with. Is there a way, and I guess I'm asking hypothetically, that, that it can be moved where the, the B is, is I don't know, removed or cabled, one of the two, but we move forward with A.
Well, I'm not the attorney on this case, but if you want to table this until the next meeting, I think you could, I'm going to make a guess that you can do that. And we can try to get more information about what these options are and get that out to you before the meeting and try to get everybody's questions at least answered, not that we're necessarily going to agree with the answers, which you don't have to do, but at least get the questions answered.
Aaron, can we move forward with this and in with, with A and then and take the the bike hub piece out and still move forward with A? Is that an option?
Yeah, I think as long as you guys clarify, because I think there's already, there's already been a motion and a second on this. So as long, Teresa, I believe you were the, the first, Joseph the second. So as long as you guys are willing to amend that, again, I don't have any background from, from John about, John Danos about the necessity to have these both go forward, but but yeah, you, you could remove B and move forward with A.
Okay, so I'd like to amend my motion to accept the 73rd Street portions of this urban renewal project and not include the Center Street and I-235 portions at this time.
I concur with that.
Okay, got a motion on the table. Roll call.
Harms?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Skiris?
Yes.
Okay, next item is item C, which is also a public hearing for ordinance amending the code of ordinances for nuisance abatement charges. Ordinance number 20 dash O2 moved to open.
So moved.
Roll call.
Mike Jones made the motion. Teresa Harms, second.
Okay.
Thank you. Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms?
Yes.
Skiris?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Having had no written comments on this, do we have any from the general public out there? Council comments?
I think, Mark, did you say that, I think other places do this?
Yeah, any place I have, well, the two communities I work in Iowa both do this. Pretty typical. It saves the attorney having to spend their time on it and save the city having to use a collection agent and pay whatever fees they charge. And and the way it used to work a couple of years ago, anyway, the city could charge if it was sent to the that may still be the case.
Okay.
Further comments? Discussion? Move to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Roll call.
Harms?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
And Skiris?
Yes.
Okay, next item is consideration of the first reading of ordinance 20 dash zero two. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Harms?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Skiris?
Yes.
Next item is the public hearing site plan review for Clive Learning Academy Parking Lot Public Hearing. Move to open?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Harms?
Yes.
Skiris?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
We, I think we have Joel from Bishop Engineering on if you folks have any questions.
Joel, would you give us a overview, please?
Sure, yeah. This is Joel Jackson at Bishop Engineering. And the project consists of, can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And the project consists of removing and replacing the existing parking lot that is currently located on the north and the northeast part of the existing school by the main entrance. As you probably noted out on site, there's an existing project that's going on that's independent from this to add on to the rear of the school, the west side of the school and to, I think they moved the existing drop off loop where the cars circulate around further to the west. As that project was progressing along, the school district was kind of looking and they ended up having enough funds to be able to go ahead and move and replace the remainder of the project or the remainder of the parking lot that connects all the way back to 73rd Street. And so that would have a, the district would have a brand new parking lot that stretches all the way from the entrance around the entire loop and then back by the, the drop off or main entrance of the school. The parking lot itself, right now, there's 59 stars stalls in the parking lot. The new parking lot will have 50 some stalls. The geometry overall is the same except for the fact that the north parking stalls are going to be switched to diagonal parking instead of in parking. And therefore that's the reduction in stalls from 59 to 56. The angle parking takes up a few more stalls. Also, the, the only added paving, which is about 700 square feet or .01 acres, is the relocation and, or I guess the addition of two ADA stalls by the entrance, just south of the entrance. Right now, there are some non-compliant old ADA stalls that are on a steep slope, not located by the main entrance. And in order to comply with ADA code, it'd be best to install two new stalls. And there was a little bit of space up there by the entrance without having to remove any of the big large trees, large trees or anything like that to squeeze those two stalls in. Otherwise, the only thing that, that really varies is there's two parts of the one is a stormwater quantity and a stormwater quality. Parts of the code that I believe, as I understand it, was adopted by the city last fall or last summer. On the stormwater quality facet of it, the stormwater is supposed to do exactly the same thing it does today where it runs up to the north into a grassy swale. And then that grassy swale slowly meanders to the west, to the creek. We did analyze that, that existing grass swale. And there's quite a large water quality advantage of that grass well because it's flat and the water takes a while and that grass well is able to clean. That accounts to around a 60, 60% reduction in total suspended solids for the water quality improvement. So I, and then the other facet of it is there, it's not necessarily up the, the pot bottles and pieces of garbage that would be floating down towards the creek. And so we're proposing to install something called a rain guardian. And the rain guardian is a, it's kind of like a very short manhole, manhole that's only about a foot deep and has a screen on the top of it. And so all the, the water that drains down, it drops through the screen and any sort of, any sort of crash and debris collects on the top of that screen and then is cleaned up periodically. And then other things that can pass through the screen are like gravel. And then there's a little bit of a depression in the bottom of it. And then that gravel sits in the bottom of it that now it'll eventually be cleaned out as, as well. And then the rest of the water passes out the side of it. And so you're able to get out the, the larger pieces of debris. And so it's not passing it down into the city waterway system. On the stormwater quantity piece of it, we are seeing a waiver from the, the city as part of the site plan for that portion of it. There's not a, there's several reasons we're requesting the waiver, you know, the, the largest being there's, there's no spot for detention by this parking lot. And we're not increasing the, the water leaving the site from the existing condition because it's more or less, it's the maintenance project, removing and replacing the existing parking lot in the same shape besides the, the addition of the two ADA stalls out front. And so there's, there's just no grass, there's no green space to be able to accommodate that detention. And we're not increasing the, what was going off. And so we are requesting a waiver of that, but that kind of sums up the project if that's helpful. I'm here to help answer any questions that you may have as well.
Thank you, Joel. Anybody got any questions for him?
Yeah, this is Teresa. I've got some. So I'm a parent at the school and pick up and drop off is definitely a problem. Are there, and certainly as we are looking to consider changes, I know that doesn't really impact, but this parking lot per se, but I think a consideration for us is we're looking at a 73rd Street changes and or reconstruction of, of 73rd Street. I think it's certainly to be considered. So you said, I'm, I'm going to start with my questions are going to be two new ADA accessible on the, you said the, are you talking about the south entrance? Because you said the main entrance, but are those, is that the south entrance of the north side of the building? Or that parking lot?
It's the exit. Basically, you have the main entrance where the, where the students are dropped off and picked up at. And
Right.
Just about 10 feet to the south of there, right there is where those stalls are located. I could do a, I could do a screen share here.
That'd be great.
See if that works. Let me try this.
I'm not, I'm not understanding where you're, if you're coming out of the, if you're facing the front building, you're saying on the south side that you're going to have two lots or two spots right there? Because right now it's part of the path, that's the drive pathway. And then you've got the bus loading area.
So, so I did just try to do a screen share and it says that it's disabled for me. But if you, I believe you have a paper packet as well, or if you have a PDF packet. On page 11 of that PDF packet or paper copy.
You're not on, you mean your page 11? Because my page 11 is not your project. Oh, hold on, they're numbered. Hold on, I'm getting there. It's page 39 of our packet. Okay?
Okay. So on page 39, is that called the layout plan?
Uh.
On the right hand side?
That's page, the layout plan is page 38.
All right. So that's number 10. Okay. Yep. Okay. Got it.
So you can, so you can see the main entrance there and just kind of to the lower right of that, there's two ADA stalls that are proposed right there. So this is not the south parking lot. This is still all on the north parking lot, right by the, right by the exit from that parking lot.
Okay, so how do those become parking spots? Are they? Okay, so how do those become parking spots? Are they, are they like parallel parking?
Right now, it's just a, a grass area in there and some landscaping and so we're just pulling that all back. And so right now, there's nothing, those stalls are not there, the, the current ADA stalls, they're just painted and they're up located on the north side of the, of the school by the, by the playground.
Yeah, I know where they are. I'm, I'm, I'm concerned that we already have a traffic nightmare at pickup and drop off times and it looks like this is narrowing that that drive to one stall, like they merge into one and right now there's two, I think, when you're coming out?
Oh wait, the width is not changing from how it is today, so the entire addition of the ADA stalls is into the grass area that's located to the south, but we, we could widen that out just a freckle, you see how there's a dimension on there of twenty-two feet and that's what it is today. But you, we could round that off a little bit more on the north side of that to make that, that transition easier for everybody to get out of there and then you end up with about, you know, twenty-five feet, say, at that, at that turn point to try to make that a little bit less tight there.
Yeah, I'm, and then I'm trying to figure out, so are these, is they, is this like a pull in, like for the ADA? Like, do you, is like you're pulling in and then backing out of that or is it like parallel parking? I think I'm looking at it that it's a pull, like a pull in, right?
That is correct, there, there would be pull installs and it'd be anticipated that those would, you know, they're not necessarily used for your, your pickup and, and drop off, you know, that, that, it's just as convenient for somebody that is that does need the ADA capabilities to just be able to pull along, but that's intended for somebody that's actually going into the school, you know, whether it be, you know, a teacher or a vehicle that's there throughout the day. That's not, you know, necessarily being used, but it's a, the intent of the, you know, trying to meet the intent of the ADA code where you're getting the stalls as close as possible. And we do have a third ADA stall as well to the north, right where you're entering into the parking lot.
Right, that's one that's currently there.
Yes, yep.
Okay, I was just trying to figure out where these, these were. Was there any, I'm just, just out of curiosity, was there any conversation with the PTO or with parents? Because this is the first that I've, I've heard about this as a parent as well, about what the, the needs, because we, we consistently have street parking in front of residential homes on at least three streets to accommodate the parking needs at the school. So I have some concerns with the reduction of three parking spots.
I can't speak for the school district as far as, as far as if there's been any conversation with the PTO, I know there's been conversation with the, the school staff and the principal and stuff concerning the project. Overall, you know, knowing that it, it certainly it's very similar to where it does today and there's not a lot of space and there weren't a lot of options. We did, we did switch those stalls to the angle to try to make it better up north, but overall, from what we've been told is those stalls mainly are not being used is from when cars are picking up and leaving, they are a little bit and so that's why we did the one angled ones, but the ones on the south side, we kept those straight in as those were going to be, you know, the district was going to make sure that those stalls were, were used by people that are not needing to back up and leave at the time of pickup or drop off.
You're talking about the ones on the south side of the building now?
No, no, I'm sorry, just the south side of the drive.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. That's an interesting statement. Did you see, did you visit this or, or at a pickup or drop off time, just out of curiosity to see what the traffic and flow and the parking was like?
I did see the traffic going around, yes, during the, I did not pay that particular attention to cars going in and out of stalls or anything like that, I, it didn't jump to my attention, but I'm not saying that there, there wasn't some at the time that I was out there.
Okay. I, this is a point of consternation consistently that we get weekly emails about as a, as a, as a parent and person who lives in that neighborhood that we're constantly getting communications from the school about and there are lots of issues. And so with this, until this came up on the agenda, I wasn't even aware that it was a consideration, that's not your issue, it's just, is there anybody from the school district on the call?
There is not this evening.
Okay. Um, anyways. My concerns come with the reduction, I, I, I think I do like the idea of the slanted parking, I hope ideally, but I'm not a parking expert by any means, that that might help. But I'm, I'm still not sure how that works, in particular, when you've got traffic coming in to that and then you've got people backing out, I'm sure that makes it easier. But I just don't, I don't know and, and then just the, that constant flow of traffic and I would not say that those are predominantly for people doing pickup because there's nowhere to park when you come for pickup, it's just not how you go and you wait in line. And so are there, you, you're doing that entire parking lot, even what's back all the way to what is the construction zone right now, is that your proposal, Joel?
That is correct, I, right now, it's an existing asphalt parking lot and then eventually it switches to a new pavement when you get farther to the west and so we're be budding up all the way to, to where the construction zone starts today.
So not into the construction zone then?
Nope, the, that's already being replaced or already has been actually replaced as part of the project that's ongoing.
Part of that project, okay, alright. Okay, I don't know, I, I'm frustrated by this and just not knowing more and having more information and somebody from the school not being on to be able to talk about what the, the plan is or if they've had conversations with the parent, the people who actually access the parking.
I think so that comes from, you know, their, the district was looking at this as a, as a maintenance project, one of the, one of the things that the district was, was considering was just, you know, taking asphalt, overlaying it. They figured like, hey, let's go ahead and, and do this right and make it all concrete so it'll, it'll be, it'll last for the long term, the concrete with the curbs and everything looks nicer than the asphalt does as well and there's really, there's not a lot of options with the amount of, of space that we have up there to the north, you know, we have, there's a slope, we have a setback, we don't, you know, you don't want to go all the way against the, the neighboring property to the north, we don't want to remove trees north of the parking lot that would upset the neighbors, I'd make it, you know, the parking lot more visible for them as well and there's just not a lot of space anyways and so the, the options were very limited for, for really what we could do. We did have discussions with the district staff and as far as, you know, what are the absolute options that we have here and, and really the, the only couple that came out of it were switching those stalls in the north to the angled stalls and then adding the ADA stalls down by the entrance. We did, we did kind of direct the, the island nose looks a little bit different too when you, when you enter the site versus when you loop all around and come back, there's a little bit of a point there to try to more direct the cars around the parking lot instead of a car wanting to, to turn left. I know the district is using a rope at certain points to try to really get the cars to, to loop around and do what they're supposed to do because that's been a, a learning curve, I know that.
Right, and so those are some of the things that, to your point, that I, I would, would hope that had been taken into consideration. Again, just, I'm trying to figure out if this new proposed plan makes improvements to traffic flow because this is an area and Chief, I don't know if you've got some feedback on this or not, but we get, I mean, there's, there's backup of traffic at drop off and pickup times, not only on Seventy-third Street. And then if we've, and I know, because I watch people try to cut that and this was the first year and I've been, I've had children at that school for almost fifteen years and that, so that people turned that corner so, and they turned it until they put up cones with a rope, so otherwise people drove over the cones. And so I'm just trying to figure out how, you, you know, we make sure that if they're, we're making, if they're making changes to this that it takes into account kind of those traffic flow issues that exist as well and not just a repavement with a change in how we park the cars. And that where, that we have an op, if there's an opportunity to make some significant changes to improve traffic flow and those sorts of things, that I would have really preferred to hear those sorts of things as goals as opposed to reducing the number of parking spots which already create consternation. And, but I do appreciate, you know, the additional ADA sites, but that's not doing anything to existing space other than taking out some grass, I mean, from what I can tell, so.
Yeah, I don't see this changing anything as far as traffic flow up there right now. I also had some concerns about those two ADA slots, I didn't know about those until just now, when we were contacted for the fire department approval, basically the discussion was that it was ripping out the parking lot and replacing it and I told them as long as we could make sure we could get apparatus back in there, I was good with it, so they would have to have a base or something for us to drive on, but definitely those two parking stalls are some, they may not be intended for people to park there during drop off, but I promise you it's going to happen. And that's just going to lead to, to more complaints from people about the traffic flow through there, so just something to think about, Joel.
Yeah, I, I agree and I, you know, along the, the point made earlier by Councilmember Harms that, you know, we could potentially widen that out to the north, even though we aren't increasing or decreasing the width from how it is today, we, there is potential to make that better, you know, both from a, you know, fire apparatus standpoint and from a passenger exit standpoint where we can, you know, really make, you know, maybe even subtract off four feet and make that a little bit wider and smoother up there on the, on the north side there, north of those ADA stalls.
Could I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Okay, Michael Freedom, a little late to the party, so, sorry about that. On, on the exit going out on the south side of that parking lot and, and I, you may have already talked about this, but is there a right and left turn wide enough that you have an arrow going south and an arrow going north?
There is today and it would be intended that stays there, they are going along that same point, they are fairly narrow and we could widen that out a little bit to the north, there's no trees or anything like that right in that area, so we wouldn't be, you know, we, we can't really wind it out to the south because you end up, you end up with an issue, there's a, a large forty-two inch tree there that we didn't want to remove, you know, if those oak trees along there, but there is opportunity to widen it out to the north to make sure that there's plenty of space for those two lanes, one to go to the right, one to go for the left turners.
Okay, that, that would be a concern that I would have, so it doesn't get stopped because people trying to go north.
Yep.
Okay, very good, thank you.
I think Dalton had a question there. Whitney, can you see his chat?
It says, Dalton, Joel, can you please tell them about the screening improvements on the north side of the project?
Oh, sure. So, on the north side of the, the project, the city code requires parking lots to be screened from residential areas and we're adding a line of shrubs along the north, the north side of the parking lot to make the city's screening requirement in the city code there and so the existing trees will all stay and it will, then we're lining the north side with the shrubs as well.
Thank you, Joel. Any other questions or comments?
Just one, one thing and again, I'm late, so I apologize if this has been asked. I saw something about the stormwater retention or getting rid of it. Is it satisfactory the way it is now?
I don't. From everything that I've observed and from what I've asked everybody, it, it doesn't seem like there's any issues with how it is today, but maybe Dalton or Mark could expand on that a little bit more.
I just know Seventy-third has had some water issues on the west side.
So, as Dave well knows. As it, as it relates to that, there's a, there's a sixty-six inch large underground storm sewer pipe that runs from the east that actually goes down underneath this existing parking lot. And so that would drain, I believe, Seventy-third Street as well as parts of the subdivision farther to the east. This particular parking lot has not drained into that sixty-six inch storm sewer, we actually had to televise to see if there was something in there to, that connected up to that swale or anything and there is not and so that, that piece of storm sewer is one hundred percent independent from this project and this project just drains into the creek and doesn't drain into the city storm sewer.
Okay, I'm, I'm just suggesting if there's any way to improve the drainage, the sewer system in there for the water, that would be appreciated, I think, but, but if it's satisfactory now, let's move on.
The, the improvements were, there was some talk about the water quality before you stepped on the meeting and I was kind of explaining that, I can go through that again if you'd like me to.
No, go ahead, go ahead, I don't want to stop, stop progress here.
Hey Joel, this is Dalton Jacobus, can you hear me?
Yep.
Could you go through some of the parking counts that you ran to get to the number of stalls needed for that building? Occupants, loading and all that stuff?
So, so there's a large parking lot to the south of this as well. Let me, when talking to the district, the district said that there were seventy-five full-time employees onsite and that at any given time, there's quite a few empty stalls on the site and there's a total of a hundred and eighteen stalls right now when you combine the north lot and the existing south lot. And that hundred and eighteen would be reduced to a hundred and fifteen with the, the switch to those angled stalls up north instead of the street installs. And so with the, with the seventy-five full-time employees, then that left, you know, some fluff space for volunteers that come in and, and other individuals that are visiting the building and so that they would allow about forty or so stalls for everybody else still. So the district was not concerned about the, the three stalls that were being lost? If that helps?
Yeah, and it really doesn't for me, I guess my question would be how many part-time staff are there then? And then how does that compare to their, their buildings? In particular, the percentage of empty stalls or, or unused stalls. It's not, I, I really wish that somebody, one, had contacted the PTO, that is probably my biggest concern at this juncture is the fact that it doesn't appear as though they've been communicated with or that we're part of this conversation. Second, that, I, and again, I don't, this is not my, I don't do this for a living and I don't know how you
I, and again, I don't, this is not my, I don't do this for a living, and I don't know how you go about finding out the right things particularly for a school building. And, but I bet it's different than how you look at it for a shopping mall. And so, you know, I guess I would ask, I appreciate the seventy-five full-time staff. I'd be curious about how many part-time staff are there? You know, and then the second piece to that would be, I appreciate that there are empty spots on the south side of the building, but you also have three different pickup and drop-off locations in the building. And so there's a south side pickup, there's a front pickup and drop-off that's for the kindergarten first and first grade. There's front door drop-off, and then there is a rear in the entrance on the west side at the back of the building, pickup and drop-off as well. And so you have a lot of different locations that, you know, folks need to have access to parking and people park then, you know, for people that are drop-off and pickup at the front of the building. You have, they are parking on the side streets, and for people that have pickup and drop-off on the back, they're just parking like in the, in the driving area where people are, should be driving. And so I just, I, I share that, and granted, I understand it's twice a day and we don't need parking spots for all of those people, but I just I, I just share some concerns about this proposal and how it's being done, and I wish there were some greater things taken into consideration. As somebody who has to deal with it, you know, regularly.
Where, where do the like central stores trucks unload? I think I've seen some of them going in the front door.
Okay, well, I think there's some temporary things going on right now during construction. The main loading dock and as far as both for cafeteria and supplies and stuff is on the very west side of the, of the school with the relocation and then the new addition.
Thank you.
Well, it, it sounds to me like there, there may be some concern about, I don't know, the practicality of this, but Teresa, I'm not sure if you're going to get the answer because it just sounds like there's no room there in general. You know, so it, but on that same end, it sounds like, it, it sounds like, you know, perhaps the people who are practically using this, such as yourself, may have concerns about that. But looking at these, the plans, it almost seems to me like a bottleneck has been created on purpose because apparently people were trying to use the north entrance to leave when they weren't supposed to. And so thus the, the that, that excerpt there, whatever, whatever you want to call it, that pinhead that, that has been created there. But if there's issues or concerns about the practicality of this thing, I guess I don't know if that is more or less our job to do, but I think it should be considered, and I think that should be taken into account because, you know, we're, we're assessing the engineering of this and the person who's presenting it to us is actually the, the engineering, and so, you know, that's fine. But as far as the people who have to use it, it seems to me like they may might want to have some input. I don't know the solution to that, but it seems like that may be a good idea, just in, in my estimation.
Any other comments? Otherwise, motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Scaries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Lefredo? Now he's muted. Mike, is that a yes? Okay, Mike Jones?
Yes.
Tom Harms?
Yes.
Next item is consideration of the resolution twenty twenty forty-eight approving the Clive Learning Academy parking lot site plan. Motion?
Well, hey Mayor, just one second there. Could you guys reference that amended resolution we sent out that specifies that it's approved in the site plan as well as waiving the stormwater quantity detention requirements? The Planning and Zoning Commission amended their resolution, and so the resolution that we sent out this afternoon is the one we would appreciate you guys voting on because there's really two items that need approved.
Site plan and the waiver of the stormwater. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
We amend the motion to include those two items?
You're asking us to do that?
Yes.
Okay, I, I will move to amend that then.
Second.
Roll call.
Mike Jones?
Well, we kind of skipped over discussion, but I, I guess I'll just say, oh, that's okay.
We only have a second, so we can back out a roll call if you have any further comments, Mike, or anybody else.
Aren't we just amending, voting on amendment?
Well, I didn't.
He didn't amend it.
What? What is the vote actually on then?
The resolution approving the Clive Learning Center parking lot site plan and the waiver of the stormwater requirement.
Okay, what, okay, so just with regards to the, I, I had expected the discussion to be of the, the stormwater aspect of it, but I will say from my perspective, I think that the, the reason why we had those guidelines put in place was because of what happened after July of, I don't even know when it was anymore, twenty eighteen. And so I'd say that because we're talking about a public entity here, not a private business, because it's Clive Elementary. And that is why, in, in my estimation, I don't have an issue with the, the request for waiving the, the storm, the stormwater waiver, so. That's my comment.
We have a motion and a second. I don't know if we got a second on the roll or on the waiver, did we Travis?
I have, I have Sue Scaries sound as the second.
Yes, I seconded it.
Okay, roll call.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Sue Scaries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Lefredo? And Harms?
No.
Okay. Next item is public forum. Time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those on the agenda. We will not take any action. In this case, open up your mic, state your name and address, and keep your comments down to less than five minutes, please. Having no one in the public forum, we will move on. Next item is consent agenda. Move to approve?
So.
Roll call.
Okay, that kind of came through at the same time, so I have a motion by Mike, second by Harms.
That works.
Okay, Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms?
Yes.
Scaries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
And Lefredo?
He must have muted.
It does say here from the city of Windsor Heights to everyone, I am unable to unmute Mike Lefredo.
Okay, we'll see if that helps. Next item is consideration of resolution twenty twenty dash fifty-one. Resolution to accept private placement proposal for general obligation corporate purpose and refunding bonds, series twenty twenty eight. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Anybody?
Second.
Discussion.
Well, there's been a, a lot of development in the past half an hour before, well, about four, four to four thirty. There was a few emails sent out, Mark, so if you could try to summarize those, I think we'd appreciate it.
Yeah, certainly. Tiana, are you on the call? Okay. Well, Mr. Donna, are you on the call?
I think you're it, Mark.
Oh, good for me. There, there was only one bid or one proposal made for the financing, which is the one that you have before you there, which is a little bit disappointing, but I'm not totally surprised by that. The city could decide to decline the bid. I personally, that's a good idea because we're taking a chance that maybe something better would come along, but it's certainly possible that nothing better will come along. The interest rate's a little bit higher than what I was hoping we'd get, but I think it's in the ballpark of what's reasonable, and I'm not sure what other things to say. It doesn't change the tax rate materially. Michelle, are you on the call?
Mark, this is.
Oh. Okay, Mr. Donna is with us now. So could, could you explain, sir, how we got to where we are with this?
I'd be happy to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We started a private placement process about ten days ago, and we solicited about sixteen banks across Iowa, the Midwest, and the country as a matter of fact. And as you've heard and reading, we're in a very volatile market right now. Whereas under a, a normal market, I'll call it, we would have expected anywhere between three to five bids based on the outline of, of your, of your bond issues. However, a number of things happened over just the last few days as we were in the market trying to get, trying to get banks lined up to buy these bonds. One of which was the release of the Small Business Administration Loan Program on Friday, which basically a number of large community banks, including a number of the banks that who have branches in your city, originally were interested, unfortunately needed to refocus on that program, and so they declined, declined interest in the city's bonds. And then it also kicked out a couple of very active buyers that we do a lot of business with because they simply were coping with that as well and didn't have enough time to respond. So in the end, we, we did receive a proposal from Capital One Funding, who's very active in this space. They're a very significant bank, one of the larger banks in the country. And those were the proposals that were submitted this morning to you folks at eleven o'clock, which I think has been summarized for you. Certainly, I would have hoped to have received more, but in this volatile market environment, frankly, we're, we're happy to, to get the one that we did. And when we compare it to the public market and other rates and issues sales that took place today, it, it's favorable to what the overall market was, was yielding, so. I hope that was helpful with a summary. I'll answer any other questions or expand on any of that if you'd like.
So what if we wait?
Well, if, if we wait, we are, well, we would be exposed to the ups and downs of the, the uncertainty of the market that would take place over, over time until, you know, I think what the market is waiting for to seek some stabilization is a control of essentially, you know, the pandemic. And so, I mean, that's the first bit of news that will provide some stabilization in the market, so. If you wait, which is certainly an option, you would certainly, we'd be exposed until what, until that market comes to you at, at a, at a future date.
One of the issues that will be in that also is we have contractors ready to go, and the downside on that is if we delay it, they won't start and their people won't get paid. So you got a double-edged sword there, Mike.
Aaron, are you on the call?
I am.
So are you, you've looked at the documents that we have as far as contracts go, and what is your opinion of the city's, I don't know, exposure, risk, whatever the word is, should the city decide to forego this financing and just wait for a better day?
Well, I mean, the, the RFP that went out bid this project for a certain time, so the, the bidders were assuming that the project was going to go forward on the schedule that was provided. There is nothing in the, the boilerplate agreements that were sent over to me last week to take a look at. There's nothing in there, there's no force majeure outs. So there's not anything in there that because of, of the times that we're in, acts of God and things outside the city's control that is going to give the city an out for this project. So the exposure would be, well, they're ready to mobilize today and we're ready to do the project today, and it might cost them more or cost them money if, if the city doesn't move forward with it on that projected timeframe.
Any other comments or discussion? Roll call.
Mike Jones?
Excuse me, this is Tiana. Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Okay, let's hold up on roll call. Tiana, you're on.
Okay, sorry, I've been trying to get on this whole time, and I just figured it out. I apologize for that. And I'm grateful for the summary that, that Paul did give. I just, I sent along with what Mark had sent, just a market overview so that I could maybe give you a little bit of a, of a perspective about where we are. Do you guys have that?
Yes.
Okay, so what I wanted you to see, you know, it's not typical, of course, for us to only have one proposal to consider, but, you know, you're all very well aware of what's been going on, that the market's been pretty volatile. So I sort of wanted to start with a more macro view on page one. It just shows you what the market has looked like in the last twenty years for the six-year term. And I picked six years because your debt is around six years in an average weight. And what you'll see is that even though, you know, we're kind of at the peak of where we've been the last week or so, in these last few weeks. in these last few weeks, we're really almost dead on to the average of where we've been over the last 20 years. So the market is volatile, and it is unfortunate that we only have the one bid. But I just wanted to give you comfort that even though it's volatile, the market is still relatively low from an absolute standpoint. The green circle is the 2014 bonds that we're refunding. And even in this, we are able to still refund the 2014 bonds that we had chosen to refund for savings. So just an update on that, you will get about $161,000 of savings with an average annual savings of $14,000 or so. So just for context, again, the, this particular maturity on the MMD index had a maximum in the last 20 years of over 5%, a minimum of .63, and we're averaging at around 237 right now. The next couple of pages just sort of give you a more condensed history, but I did want you to take a look at page two, which shows you where your pricing relative to where your 2017 A issue and your 2016 A issue priced. So again, it is higher, but this is quite a bit longer than the last issue that you did. So I just wanted to give you that comfort. You can look at the next, at pages three and four. And actually, page four is something that Baird provided. In addition to rates being volatile, credit spreads have widened. They're coming down a little bit, but you can look on page four from Baird and see that our credit spreads recently are a bit elevated. So you also have, you know, rates changing, but also there being just more of a premium placed on credits that don't price directly at the AAA level. And so I just hoped that while you were considering this bid, that if any of you were concerned about how this performed compared to your other sales or compared to the market in general, that you could have just a broader context of the market so that you could see sort of where this is in comparison to the universe of rates that you've experienced, not just recently when it's been, you know, pretty unpredictable and pretty volatile, but over the long term.
Thank you. Any questions for Tiana? Or for Paul? Any other discussion?
My vote is still yes, but assuming that this passes, Mark, when do, do people get to work?
Well, pretty soon, I hope. They were gonna, absolutely, it was gonna start today. And I'm gonna get with them either this evening or tomorrow and tell them to go. And Elder was planning to start tomorrow. I don't think it's gonna take you long for either of these companies to get going. We're not that far off from where they were planning to be anyway.
All the Bear cage and stuff are already out on the street. Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Hearing no further discussion, roll call.
Chase Harns?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
And LaFredo.
He's got something screwed up on his mute. I don't know what it is.
We're gonna count it as a yes unless he instructs me otherwise.
Okay. Alrighty, next item is Resolution 2020-52, Accepting the Private Placement Proposal for General Obligation Urban Renewal Bonds 2020B. I believe the same information goes along with that also.
Can I just make a statement? I never voted.
Oh.
Oh.
Travis?
It's a yes, but I just wanted to get my vote out there.
Thanks.
I apologize, Susan. I got you now.
All right, thanks.
Where are we on 2020B? Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second? Roll call.
Was that, was that you, Susan, on the second?
Yes.
Okay. Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Siri?
Yes.
LaFredo?
He voted no.
No, okay. Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harns?
Yes.
Okay, next item is Item C. Consideration Resolution 2020-53, Resolution Approving Budget Transfer.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. No discussion?
I'd just like to say thanks to Rochelle for bringing more of the cleanup to our budget and work, and thanks for her proactivity on making this happen.
I'll second that.
Thank you, George. Roll call.
Siri?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
LaFredo? Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harns?
Yes.
Next item is D, Consideration Resolution 2020-54, Approving Payment of Routine Bills. Motion?
I'm a. Second.
Discussion.
So I'm assuming that this is something that other councils do in this recommendation?
I can tell you.
Mark?
Go ahead, Rochelle.
Um, can you hear me? Sorry, I don't know if I can. Okay, um, this is something that you guys probably should have heard years ago, and you didn't. Some of this is actually already happening because we have e-pay. So like our electric bills get paid automatically and before council meetings sometimes or after council meetings. This is just, it's just something for auditors, so we have it in place. And in these, these times right now, we just don't know, just don't know. So I thought it was a good idea to put it in place.
And it's something I'm familiar with about any place I've ever worked.
Yes, I was surprised you didn't have it.
Nothing surprises me anymore, but thank you for helping us understand.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Siri?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
LaFredo? Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Harns?
Yes.
Next item is Consideration Resolution 2020-55, Approving Repairs to the Parking Lot of Public Safety Building in the Amount of $16,000.
Second.
Any discussion? I think the drawings were pretty well self-explanatory.
I'm just, do we have any plans to fix the, the driveway there by the basketball court? The parking lot area there at all? I, I know in the past, kids have played basketball there, and it is kind of torn up in that parking lot area.
Actually, that, the whole parking lot back there is not in the best condition. I have that on a sticky note attached to my monitor to look into. Now, I'm sure it's gonna be costly, but I do have that on a note just to look at and see what it costs to do as we move forward. We just haven't had time.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Siri?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
LaFredo? Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Harns?
Yes.
Next item is Consideration Resolution 2020-56, Approving the Scope and Services Agreement with Boltland Bank to Complete a Park Plan in the Amount of $18,600. Motion?
Approve.
Second?
Anybody second? If not, I will second.
Okay, any discussion?
Well, this, it shows you, there's like a kickoff meeting in April, information gathering. How is that gonna work with the situation that we're in right now with the public?
So that was one of the, this is Dalton. Can everybody hear me? Yeah, and then he's lighting up. So that was one of the conversations that I had with Boltland Bank before I made the recommendation for approval. All of our organization and tracking meetings can be done by Zoom, kind of like what we're doing right now. And then the public input portion is gonna switch to online information gathering. We've actually found that most of our, most of my actionable requests have come through Facebook. Come from, through Facebook from Whitney or Ie, those were just phone calls.
So Dalton, with that comment, do you still plan on getting public input at some juncture, or?
Yeah, absolutely. We can't do the plan without pretty extensive public input. So I know there's that, that, that neighborhood app, or what's that thing called, this Siri's Neighborhood, Neighborhood?
How is it? Next, oh, next door?
Yeah.
Next door.
Yeah, yep. So there's that. We've got a pretty decent following on our social media, and then we're gonna advertise it in our newsletter as well.
As far as the, I understand that there's, it sounds like there's plans for how that's going to happen. What is the, do we have an idea of what the timeframe would be?
So the timeframe, timeframe is a deliverable parks plan to the council by mid-September, which would give us plenty of time to budget for improvements to the park in the summer of 2021. Because I'm gonna assume that a lot of these improvements are gonna be pretty, pretty costly, so we'll have to budget for them. But basically, the timeline that we laid out in the RFP, in that Boltland Bank included in their proposal, we could, we could stick to that pretty well. We could even maybe move it up a little bit if we don't have to coordinate, get in the community center and all that stuff. If we could just have kind of an open comment period through Facebook and the website, I think that would be sufficient.
Dalton? Dalton?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm back with the living. Is there, are there some grants available for this now?
So that was kind of one of the things that I, I put in that memo, is there is definitely an opportunity for grant funding here. So I reached out to the Wellmark Foundation, which I might add, I think that given the certain circumstances that we find ourselves in, that, that grant funding might be, might dry up a little bit. But I reached out to them, and they said that they have not funded a lot of, of park plans themselves, but they've helped fund the implementation of the plans. So we could definitely, we could definitely go for some grants later this summer. I think that the award for the Wellmark Foundation grant, which I think we would be most competitive for, the award would be made in August, and so we probably wouldn't start this thing until September. And if we did that, it would just kind of push the whole timeline back, and we'd miss budget cycle. And so we'd be really looking at 2022 before we start implementation. Not to say that we couldn't do that, it's just, I don't know, gotta make the decision is, is 50% grant funding, so about $9,000. Is that worth kicking this thing two years down the road and for implementation? I, I think that it's best to do it now, but I definitely understand the appeal of waiting.
How, what, what's, how much is the grant amount again?
So the grant is 50% match, so we would have to provide half the cost. But I did reach out to the grant administrator, and they said that, I mean, they're pretty wishy-washy on whether this would get funded or not, and I, I get it, but it did not sound like this would be a very competitive project. I went through their, their most recent award from their grant for the last five years, and I think they only funded one park plan, and it was, I think it was part of a comprehensive plan, but I can't, I can't remember entirely. But I think that if we have this park plan in our hand with recommendations for implementation, that as we approach grant opportunities down the road, we'll be much more competitive because we'll be able to say, this is how this project fits into the bigger picture.
Okay, I, I've heard you say that it'd be, it's going to be a rather expensive project.
Uh, so the implementation of some of these recommendations that come forth, so whatever those might be. So anything from putting in a basketball court to putting in a, I don't know, a bungee tower or whatever, I mean, they can be pretty expensive. So whatever it is that we do, we're gonna have to budget for. The plan itself isn't, I mean, I'm not gonna say it's cheap, but $18,000, I think, is money well spent to kind of make sure we're, we're moving in the right direction with a, a clear head of focus. And I also reached out to David at, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The plan could probably be done over time, too, if we're funding it ourselves.
Right, yeah. So we're trying not to rush this thing, but keep in mind that we do want to hit deadlines for the budget cycle. I reached out to David Swartz. He represents the Windsor Heights Foundation on most of the things that we do. And I told him that this was coming down the pipeline, and he was incredibly excited about it. He said this fits in perfect with what their mission is, and that they're all about it, that they had helped spread the word and solicit public input as well. So for, for what that's worth, it was really, it was good to hear that he was supportive of this.
Yeah, I'm sure he is. Okay, thank you.
I think, no, go ahead.
Dalton, so you've applied for this with Wellmark, is that correct, to have the plan kind of paid for halfway by them? Is that correct?
No, so the grant, the grants, I think they're due the end of June. And so I wouldn't even submit a grant application for three months, and then they take six weeks to review them. And then the funds are not distributed until, I think it's September or late August. And so maybe, I don't know, it'd be five months later. So I would need to think about if we need to submit or solicit more RFP or more proposals, but no, so I did not, I guess to answer your question, no, I did not apply for a grant.
I just didn't know, if you applied for it, and, you know, we approve this now if, with that grant, if they can, you know, back pay us that, the $9,000 or whatever, if we actually win the grant.
So I did ask her about that, and she was pretty steadfast on, on no. They want to use that grant money to make projects happen, and if we've already expressed that this is gonna happen without their funding, it did not sound like it would be a successful venture. But we can certainly go down that road if you guys would like me to. I just don't know how successful it would be.
This is Justin with Boltland Bank. I just wanted to add one thing. Dalton was correct. A lot of these grants that have to do with this sort of stuff, they want projects that are construction projects, because then they can show people that, hey, they paid for this type of stuff, and it's actually in the ground. They look for the pictures and wanting people to actually use it more than planning purposes. That's kind of why you don't see too many planning grants of that nature. They'd rather see this stuff actually go in the ground. If that makes sense.
It, it makes sense to me, but my question still is, is it worth writing a grant?
I guess I don't know if there's a downside to writing the grant. It's just like Dalton said, is whether you wait till you get approval from that, you hear that, and then start it. And like you said, you, some of these projects wouldn't be done till 2022. If that's a concern or not, I don't know. It's just kind of how it falls with your budgeting, your budgeting cycle.
We just got a comment from David. He said, this is David Swartz. I agree with Dalton. We just got a comment from David. He said, this is David Swartz. I agree with Dalton. Our board wants to align with the council initiatives like this. So for what, for what that's worth, this, this really aligns, aligns well with what the, what the Windsor Heights Foundation's looking to do, implement some more community building in the park. And then I think this is kinda in line with what you guys are, you're trying to have a clear vision going forward with what we're doing.
Any else got any comments or any further discussion? Roll call.
Kiri?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Lefredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Arms?
Yes.
Okay, next item is G, Consideration Resolution 2020 57, Resolution Approving Fee Waiver for Knights in the Heights. Motion?
I'm up.
Second.
Roll call. I should ask if there's any discussion, but I'm assuming this would go forward. So if there's any discussion, please speak up. Roll call.
Kiri?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Lefredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Arms?
Yes.
Next item is Consideration Resolution 2020 58, Resolution Approving Fee Waiver for Windsor Heights Foundation Ice Cream Social. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Real quick, what's the, what's the fee for the ice cream social?
It's for use of the community center, correct?
Yes.
So is there a change in the process?
So I, I talked to, this is Dalton again, I talked to David Swartz last week, maybe the week before, and the foundation's thinking about having their ice cream social in the community center instead of having it in people's living rooms. And so just so we could get this on the calendar, make sure they have the space if they want it, we're requesting it. I think the fee was a couple hundred bucks, maybe?
Three thirty-one.
Three hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-five.
Okay, that's fine. I just was, I don't have a problem with it. It's just, it would be different than how we've traditionally done it for as long as we've been doing it.
Sure. So this is still a conversation event. We just wanted to make sure it was available for them. And this is definitely, for anybody listening from the public, this is not, this, this is not a for sure thing. It's just, in case they want it, it's available for them. So kind of an insurance policy.
The, the, yeah, some of the neighborhoods, I know last year did not hold them. And so I think it's probably a pretty good idea. I think David's got a comment in there on the chat, add a new venue.
In addition to the neighborhoods.
Mm-hmm. And I think part of the discussion originally was to cover the part of Windsor Heights that lies south of 235, so that would allow them an opportunity to come in. That would be like their location in addition to other working it also. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Kiri?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Lefredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Arms?
Next item is Consideration Resolution 2020 59, Resolution Approving Fee Waiver for Walnut Creek Church Mission to the City.
Someone just wanna give us a little bit more background on it?
Whitney, do you got this one?
Yeah, it's just in a event where the church wants to come and do small things like pull weeds and add mulch, just little beautification projects, and they would be using the pavilion. Again, with the, the timeline, this is kind of up in the air. If it will take place, it's at the end of May.
Thank you.
Be similar to when we had the creek cleanups, where we used the pavilion for site to start off with.
Sure.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Kiri?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Lefredo? Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Arms?
Yes.
Next item is Consideration Resolution 2020 dash sixty, Resolution Authorizing Intergovernmental Transfer of Public Funds Agreement between the Iowa Department of Human Services and the City of Windsor Heights.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Mark, would you like to explain that a little bit?
Well, I think the chief's a better source of information on this one.
Chief?
Yeah, this is just, you may remember, we approved an intergovernmental transfer for the G E M T, the reimbursement above and beyond what Medicaid and Medicare pays for transport. We have to do one of those annually, but since the first round of those was kinda mid-year, that's why the second one is as early as it is. All this does is allow us to transfer electronically the forty percent state share back to the state when we get our revenues from the G E M T repayments. One other piece of good news from just the last week, is we were notified that because of the presidential declaration and the way that the Medicaid payments are made, that will result in a six point two percent increase for the first two years of this and revenues we get back.
That's good. Got a motion and any further discussion? Roll call.
Kiri?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Lefredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Arms?
Yes.
Next item is Consideration of Resolution 2020 sixty-one, Resolution Approving Police Using Union Contract. Chad?
We kinda went over the changes in this once before. I know it's been a little bit, so I'll just highlight those right quick again for you. The only thing that changes going forward in the, the contract besides what was already written in place is on-call pay. For the investigators, they were only getting paid on-call pay on the weekends, even though they were on-call in the evenings. That's an additional cost, or approximately five thousand dollars annually to the city. These are all things that are already included in next year's budget, so it's nothing we have to go back and amend for or change out. Holidays, there was a change. If they work a holiday, the full shift, instead of getting paid six hours, they'll be paid eight. Apparently, in the past, they were paid point seven five on top of the, the hours worked. So for the eight, or eight and a half hour shift, the point seven five was six. For a ten hour shift, it's eight. The other thing is if they're scheduled overtime on a holiday or work beyond their normal shift, then they would be paid double time instead of time and a half. That does not include any, like GTSB voluntary overtime. It'd only be if they were mandated overtime. That's a, a pretty minimal cost to the city. That are working, yes.
How often does that happen, that it's a mandated overtime?
On a holiday, I don't know. We mandate overtime fairly regularly, just because if someone calls in sick, we have to cover that. If we have vacations, we have to cover those shifts. So I actually track the numbers of hours of overtime spent in relation to covering shifts. So if you're interested in that, I can send you the exact numbers and percentage of the budget so far this year that we spent on that.
Yeah, I'd be curious, since we're moving it from time and a half to double time.
I can send you those numbers. Like I said, the thing about, on a holiday, that's a total look. So on holidays, it's gonna be minimal, because of course, you're only talking about a couple people working, so.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm not arguing about it. I'm just curious.
Right. Uniform allowance, there was a change. They asked for the person assigned to Metro Star to be able to, to obtain Metro Star required equipment that doesn't go allow, against their uniform allowance. That person's outfitted right now, but if Metro Star were to require something, then rather than hitting that person's uniform allowance, we would provide that. I don't see that being a significant cost. The city will no longer collect union dues, and that's by new law, so they'll have to set that up with the union themselves, which will alleviate some headache on payroll. Shift differential, we added late swing instead of just overnights, because late swing is actually five P into three AM, and that's a twenty-five cent per hour, a total cost of a thousand dollars over a year. And then the wage increase that we brought before y'all, we went to three point two five the first year, three and a half the second year, and three point seven five the third year. The contract would be in effect through June thirtieth of 2023, and then there's also a, a quarterly management labor meeting, which is pretty common with other, other groups, just to make sure we're all on the same page. A couple of notes, we were able to negotiate the contract in about two and a half hours, one afternoon, so we saved a significant amount of money in legal fees doing that. And a lot of other cities have had some problems. Once their council approved the contract, then the, the unions came back and wanted to change them. We knew about that, thanks to Matt Brick, and we've actually got the signed copies of the contract from the union before we brought it to council to avoid that problem.
Any other questions for Chad or discussion?
Chad, you, you went down a, a pretty lengthy list of, I guess I'd describe them as advantages or pluses for the officers themselves. I guess in a negotiation, I would say that, that those were things that they got. So what did we get?
The majority of stuff that we got were no changes to what's already existing. And there's been some questions come up on a few different things over the past couple years. I, I expected them to come back within the contract, and they did not bring that stuff up. I expected them to come back with an increase in uniform allowance per officer, which did not happen. There was some discussion about court time, or jury time, and how that plays in with an officer, whether they're on duty, off duty, and we were able to, to keep that out of there. They initially came in with a, a salary increases. They asked for four percent. We told them that wasn't gonna go, that they were gonna have to get it down. We got it down to the three point two five, three point five, three point seven five. The on-call pay is kind of an FLSA thing that we should have been doing anyway, and could probably get into a problem not having that to begin with. So while it does seem that it's, it's rich towards them, part of the effort was also to ensure that we retain our employees, and, and most of this stuff is fairly insignificant cost to the city. So from a retention and recruitment standpoint, we've been very lucky. Since I've been here, we haven't lost an officer yet, and our people, I think, are pretty happy. Our morale's pretty high, and part of this was, was to keep that without doing things that would break the city.
And that's very important, the retention, Chad. I commend you on that.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion, comments? Roll call.
Hold on, I just have two questions. Teresa, in the past, because you were on budget and public safety, would, did this go through those committees prior to coming to council?
I believe it did not go through public safety, but in my past experience with budget and finance, and I was only on budget and finance for a very short period of time, and it wasn't renewal, but I believe it did go through budget and finance, so I would have expected that to happen.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
Roll call.
Kiri?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Lefredo? Mike Jones?
Yes.
Arms?
Yes.
Okay, folks, thank you. The next item is discussion about filling city administrator position. I know we ended up with the individual that we had, that was lined up and chose not to do it. How do we wanna go forward? Do we want to go back out, have Gov HR do another deal, or make any changes to the application? Just throwing that out. This is just discussion, there's no resolution or anything else.
Well, I think-
I don't know.
Go ahead, Matt.
I don't know how hot the job market is right now. I don't know if it's something, I guess, depending on what, Mark, you may have to say. I think it, it might be a better idea to wait until things calm down with COVID, and I, I don't know what that would be, you know, because we really don't have any idea how long that would be, but I don't know how fruitful it's going to be. And obviously, I wanna hear from everybody, please, on, you know, how are, how, how good is the job market as, you know, people are wanting to upend their lives and, and move and take a very serious position at this timeframe. I can't imagine right now it would be too many, too many people willing to do that.
My, my comment would be, you know, contracts end June thirty-first, you know, so you may want to look at about that timeframe. You know, maybe the first part of June.
The previous conversation that we had about this was that if this weren't to, if we weren't to find somebody, or this weren't to happen, that we would go, I don't see Charlene on the call, it was Charlene, right? That is there, I would have liked to have her on the call to be able to have a conversation about what she would recommend as the professional in this space, and who's been giving us guidance. But I would think we would wanna, you know, kind of to, to Mr. Lefredo's point, if there's an opportunity to kinda meet that next timeframe, when people might be looking, they're gonna, you know, probably if they're in a space of not going to be renewing contracts and that sort of thing now, would be the timeframe that they would probably know that. So this might be an ideal time to press forward. If, I'm assuming this might be a great time for people to be looking for jobs if they otherwise aren't employed, or might, you know, the change piece, though, I don't know. I would hope we would keep moving forward.
Mark, I think you can probably get ahold of Charlene and either get her back on another call, or ask her what her thoughts are to provide rest of the information to council.
I will contact her and ask her to send an email, if that's all right, just telling, describing what she thinks the market's like right now.
Joseph?
I agree with Teresa. I think we need to keep moving forward.
Okay. Susan?
I'm fine with keep moving forward. I just wonder kind of how many people are going to want to change their, their lives around with what's going on in the world right now.
Okay. Since-
Well, I, I agree to move along, and again, some people, I would imagine, will not have much choice but to look at other options for themselves. So I think that is a good time to do it in June, and hopefully, things get better with the pandemic, and- And, uh, I think we better need, we better probably consider, and Mark has mentioned this before, uh, their wage structure that we've offered and reconsider those kinds of things.
Mark, I think the best thing to do is if you get ahold of, uh, Charlene and get some information, and then we can bring it back.
I'll do that.
Now, did-
Okay with everybody? Susan, you had a comment. Go ahead.
Um, when we were discussing things, Charlene said that she would do kind of a rundown or a matrix or whatever she called it of, um, the, the pay scale. Is that something that we can look at to see if we're, we're in the, the right area on a pay scale or kind of what we have to do with our pay?
Yeah. I think that can be included.
That was gonna be my next question, who is, if she could make a recommendation based on our city size and what we're, and been, been through this process with us. Um, at this juncture, if she, if there would be, um, a recommendation on what we might, I mean, that was one of her last comments to us, is that might be one of the issues. So, and then knowing what we're looking for based on the previous, um, experience, that might be helpful.
Mark, I think that's in your ballpark right now.
Yes, I'll ask her about the wage review also.
Okay. Next item is mayor and council reports. Any committee updates? Start from the normal corner decision.
No updates.
Joseph?
Um, we have a DART meeting, uh, tomorrow, and then, uh, NPO meets next Thursday. DART's continuing to kind of monitor the situation to figure out what service can look like. Uh, we moved to, uh, Saturday schedules for all the lines during the week, starting on the, oh. Uh, but tomorrow's conversation will be a little bit more about, um, ridership and what we can do to keep drivers safe and keep people moving if they need to use public transportation. I'll let you know how that goes.
Joseph, has that changed at all for our, I'm knowing how busy our hub is here and what happens and how busy Walmart still is right now? Have we seen a deep, I mean, I don't know if that's something you'll learn tomorrow, whether or not there's been a decline, or have we reduced the number of, um, routes in our space?
Yep. So, um, Route three, which is the main one that goes through and down university into Walmart, um, will be on Saturday schedule two, starting on the twelve. Um, I've no, don't know specifically about that route, but I know overall we've had about fifty-five to sixty percent decline in ridership. Um, but I don't know what our particular route has been. I'll, I'll find out though.
Thanks.
Mr. LaFredo? Okay, Mike Jones?
Oh. Dave, Dave, can I finish your?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I probably tapped the wrong damn thing. But I guess my comment would be, um, some things came in pretty late with regard to the bonding and that kind of thing. And, um, I don't think that's, those are decisions that at least I don't feel comfortable making, um, in that short notice. And so I wasn't real prepared. I don't know about others on the bonding recommendation. Because I, I had written down a few questions, and we know that the economy is not at its high point, and interest rates are low, and probably is not gonna change anytime soon, and maybe even get lower. Uh, but what, what I'm saying is, I would just say proceed with caution on this bonding, and I know we want to get the projects underway. Um, and if that's what we, the priority is to get the projects underway, then we better go ahead and, and go with the one that, uh, the one, the one bank that is, so that they would take it on to debt. So that, that's just my two cents.
Thank you. Therese?
Yeah, a couple of things, um, just real quick. Um, and I don't know if, uh, Mr. LaFredo was familiar with this or not, but, um, Mrs. Green, um, is no longer at, uh, Clive, uh, Learning Academy, and Mr. Libby will be the contact, um, there, um, through the remainder of, um, um, I believe that the end of June. And so if there's any issues there, that would be, um, a contact. And then, um, Metro Wasted, uh, meet via Zoom or teleconference or however, I can't remember all of my, uh, different platforms and how we're meeting. But just a quick update from that, we met at the end of March. Um, uh, the, um, trend for haulers right now is to not pick up the large items. Um, right now, um, we have ASI as our hauler, and they have not suspended the large, um, item pickup. So in Windsor Heights, we're still fine, but there, it's the only hauler right now that's still doing large item pickups. So if there's any, um, issue that comes with, um, a shorthand of workers or anything like that, they'll probably or likely suspend the large item pickups just because it takes more manpower. So just an FYI for, um, on that. Um, the other thing that, um, we need to, um, probably put on the agenda and make a decision on or give some, uh, guidance on is spring cleanup. Some cities are suspending their spring cleanup. Ours would generally be, I think, in May, middle of May. Um, and I don't know if that's, I can't remember if that's on the calendar. I'm sure it is. Um, but we need to make a decision if we want to suspend that for the time being, or if we want to just continue. Um, it's kind of a mixed bag on what the cities are doing. So, um, I don't know if anybody has any thoughts, um, specifically on that. Um, this, um, week, our yard waste, um, for, uh, the season is, uh, starts on Thursday and Friday of this week. So, um, get sure, I was a week early. Mine's waiting to be picked up. Um, and so it's, um, get out there, get your yards cleaned up, and, uh, you can start putting it on the curb. And then one of the, um, new programs, um, that we've started, we've got the two, um, hazard waste, um, collections. There's one in Grimes and one in Bonneville that you can take to drop, um, household, uh, waste and, um, a whole variety of different, uh, things out there from paint and oils and antifreeze and batteries and the, uh, light bulbs and those sorts of things. Um, so they've started a new program in an effort to reduce the number, um, of interactions between staff and, um, the, the public at this juncture. And they do have a house side collection. And so if you go on the Metro Wa, uh, Metro Waste website, you can click on, um, that, and, um, it's a twenty-five dollar fee. And, uh, they will drop off a couple of bins in a bag. Um, and so, um, and then you can fill that with your stuff. But it does include, um, you know, aerosol, aerosol cans, uh, corrosive products, cell phones, um, batteries, e-waste. So like your DVDs, your VCRs, computers, radios, stuff like that, um, fertilizers, pesticides, uh, gas, um, paints and those sorts of things. There is a, um, a list on there of accepted and not accepted, um, i- items. So just, um, know that, um, there are, there's a list of things you can include or not include. I did sign up, um, and so I'll let you know how it goes, um, this next time. But they rotate those drop-offs and pickups, um, Friday to Friday. Um, and so we, our, our community is, um, um, uh, that's available. And then last, everybody should have received, um, an email from Leslie. And, um, they, we did, we are having a small increase, point two four percent, I believe, increase in our, um, in our trash pickup. And, um, so we're moving from, um, eight dollars and thirty-two cents to eight dollars and thirty-four cents. So it's a two da, two cent, excuse me, a two cent increase. Um, and that's a formula that they use. Um, there was no increase in landfill rates this year, uh, but there was a small increase in, uh, the fuel and the CPI. So, um, that's where the two cents comes from.
Thank you. Mark, you got anything more to add?
I'm sorry. Therese, who did you say the contact was for Clive now?
Um, it is Mr. Libby, and I will contact, I will, um, send, uh, Joe, I believe is his first name, and I'll send you his contact information, Chad.
Thank you.
Or I'll send it to, to Mark and the staff. And Mike LaFredo.
Text Therese. Mark, you got anything more to add?
Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, we have decided to extend the pet licensing deadline to July first. Uh, bids for the two thousand twenty street patching work are due on Thursday. The locations are Seventieth Street between Hickman and Wilshire. The four Walnut Creek Bridge approaches on Seventy-third and several hundred feet of southbound Seventy-third near the YMCA entrance. Uh, the city has purchased three laptops and three printer scanners to allow people to work from home. The printer scanners arrived last week, and the laptops came in today. We expect FEMA and the state of Iowa to cover eighty-five percent of the cost. I plan to be in, working from home on Wednesday, now that I have a computer, but will come into the office occasionally as necessary. Thank you.
Travis?
Um, yeah, just a quick thing. Um, this is your, our first foray into civic clerk in, um, generating out the packets. So, um, if you see things you like or see things you don't like, just let me know, and I'll get those integrated as we keep rolling this out. But this is just step one, so, um, stay tuned for that.
Travis, it looks like it automatically, presumably automatically generated the page numbers at the bottom right?
Yes, it does that.
Do you know if it would be easy, um, to perhaps, like, put what page number corresponds with what item?
That is something, yeah, I do want to look into because, um, one of the things I wanted to do is have it be, have it number each item. So that every, every section would have an item number associated with it, kind of like how we did the packets before. So I'll put that in as a question when I talk to them next.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anything further, or otherwise I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to Monday, April twentieth. And the agenda says regular council meeting at the council chambers. We'll play that by ear. Stay tuned.
So moved, Dave.
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, uh, Siri?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
LaFredo? Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Harms?
Yes.
Okay, folks, thank you. Always a trip to do this, especially with Zoom. We'll get there. Thank you all.
Yep, bye.